You got anything here? It was so. But anyway. That passed the way.
If it's an advertised time.
No, she was dental. Cleaner that morning. Thing with her, and she was happy as hell. It was, it was basically a stroke.
Oh, well, there's a lot to be said for dying like that, though.
In her sleep or very near her sleep, and it was one, one, one fell swoop. No, no coming back.
Yep.
No coming back.
Uh, no, I didn't go through them.
That's why I wanted to talk to him.
No. Just didn't really have time.
Phil and I, like a lot of people, we go, he and I go back many, many, many years.
Yeah.
Many years. It's, it's, uh, it's one of those things.
Yeah, you're ready.
It.
I actually like that design.
You want to make an announcement, there'll be a few more minutes?
I'm gonna skip over that, I'm gonna go to.
Oh, okay.
Did you hear anything?
No, I haven't heard a thing, I haven't got a message.
Ah, it's just, uh.
I know she's coming.
We could.
George, forty-four Westford Street is a continuance at our request. And the applicant agreed.
So, I'm gonna start the meeting, we're actually waiting for one more board member who's on their way. So, see in the, and there's the, there's the number. So, seeing the hours after seven o'clock on Wednesday, May tenth. I call the Chelmsford Planning Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda is minutes, we don't have any. Second, I'd like to introduce our new board of selection liaison as Ken LaFave. He's here in the audience, welcome. First item on the agenda is eleven Cushing Place for major modification to a previously approved special permit under Article twenty-two, Village Central Relay District. Purpose of adding a fourth floor with sixteen new units and associated site improvements and other relief that may be deemed necessary. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson at one fourteen Turnpike Road in Chelmsford. I'm just gonna run through briefly the project team that's here tonight and bring you through kind of our agenda to hit on the six items that were discussed at the last meeting, and I have a presentation here to follow. Obviously, myself, Philip Iliopoulos, our project attorney is here, Mark Pelletier from Mogul Architects is here, Mike Santos, my traffic engineer from Howard Stein Hudson is here, Robert Green from Winstanley Enterprises is here, and also attorney Bruce Falby from DLA Piper is here with us tonight. At the last meeting, we were given six different directives. So, the updates are as follows, is basically to prepare the comparison elevations. So, we have some elevations for you tonight that shows what was previously approved as part of the fifty-four unit building project and how that relates in height to the seventy unit project. We have a couple of different slides to show you that. We also have a wall section to show you how the wall face basically changes from the old project to the new project. We have also met with Historic and was given a list of items, and those have been added to the drawings, so Mark will bring you through those items. We have taken traffic counts on Cushing.
Actually, I'm gonna stop you one second. We have some letters that we should have.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, this one is, fire prevention. Dear board members, in regards to the proposed vehicular access gate at eleven Cushing Place, this office finds the following. The fire department is not in favor of the one-way vehicle access gate because it negatively impacts immediate fire department response to this property. Fire companies accessing the building from Littleton Road would be severely delayed if access to the garage entrance is needed. In addition, this department is concerned with additional traffic exiting the property onto Littleton Road. The intersection control signals in Central Square do not currently provide for traffic exiting the lot between Brick House Pizza and the Central House Apartments. It's new paragraph. If the gate is installed as a condition of this project, the gate shall have a NOX key switch installed in key to the Chelmsford Fire Department specifications. The entire roadway width shall not be obstructed by the gate when in the open position. In addition, the vertical clearance of the gate in the open position should not be less than thirteen feet, six inches. I respectfully request that these comments be made part of the board's deliberation process. Signed, Daniel Katsoufas, Captain. Okay, Chelmsford Historical Commission. The Historical Commission met with several representatives of the apartments at Griss Mill at Cushing Place on April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. We thank you for suggesting that meeting. It was very productive. The Historical Commission suggested accommodations in the architectural details that, if incorporated, would add to the aesthetics of the proposed development. As this is such a large building in the center of town, every effort should be made to ensure that it complements the buildings in our historic center. The Winstanley team members agreed that the suggestion did add to the character of the proposed building. New paragraph. Some of the additions discussed were use of corbels and brackets, wider fascia boards, window hoods, and heavier sills with wider casings, use of molding, wider porches, et cetera. The architect Mark Pelletier sent the commission information on some of the proposed changes, and the Historic Commission is satisfied that these proposed features, the building will be, will more complement the center. Signed, Chelmsford Historical Commission. Okay, and we got one more in this batch. This is from KP Law.
Town Council.
Huh?
Town Council.
Oh, okay, thank you. Quant, Ray Quantum, are you sure this belongs?
It was requested.
Okay, quantum of voting requirements for modifications of a special permit. Dear members of the planning board, you have requested an opinion concerning the quantum of vote requirements for a modification of a special permit. In my opinion, a supermajority, two-thirds of the full seven-member planning board is required to modify a special permit. New paragraph. The quantum of a vote required for a municipal entity to take action is established through substantive law. Bloom Chris versus Hollington. He mentions a number of cases, so I'm gonna just skip over them. Basically, there's one case that states that a simple majority of a collective body is empowered to act for the body absent statutory provision to the contrary. The quantum of a vote required to approve a special permit is required in general law, Chapter forty, A, Article nine, which provides that a special permit issued by a special permit granting authority shall require a two-thirds vote of board with more than five members. With respect to modifications or substantive amendments of a special permit, the courts have held that a special permit granting authority has the same discretion to amend the special permit as it has to grant the special permit in the first instance. Barlow versus Planning Board of Whalen, sixty-four Mass. Basically, accordingly, the hearing requirements, discretionary review standards, and quantum of vote requirements applicable to a special permit under general law, Chapter forty, A, Article nine, are likewise applicable to an application to modify a special permit. Thus, it is my permit, it is my opinion that the affirmative votes of five of the planning board's full seven-member board shall be required in order to modify a special permit. Please don't hesitate to contact me. Jonathan Silverstein. A great legal letter.
My life.
Yeah.
In addition.
We're gonna have some more here.
In addition, we received numerous letters from, from the public. I'm gonna read the names and addresses, and then we're gonna read the letters. At that time, we'll mention the name. We have addresses for Lisa Perrin at forty-eight Parkerville, Tom Cristiano, six Drew Circle, Sheila Ippolito, three Somerset, Mark Gilchrist, twelve Danforth, Ashley Bamford Fisher, fourteen Davis, Lucille, forty-eight, six Beach, Mara Snow, forty-one Old Stage, Mara and Steve Marshall, eight Putnam. Then we have numerous letters with no address. So, ones from Deb Levine, Laura Hartzel, Andrea Seer, Carrie Wetzel, Carissa Campbell, Leanne Newmeyer, Catherine Barton. The ones we don't have addresses for, we, we don't know if they're residents of town. We're gonna make some assumptions that they are, and we will read those letters. But in the future, if you're submitting a letter to the board, you really need to put your address on it as well. So, I'll, I'll go, we're gonna split this up a little bit, because there's quite a few of them, some are lengthy, and I will take a couple here, and then I'll go with Mike, and then to Ed. So, the first one is from C.T. Cristiano. Good morning, Colleen and Chelmsford Planning Board. I was speaking to a member of the Chelmsford Historic Commission last night, and that person told me that the developers have increased their proposal, proposed Griss Mill apartment complex from fifty-four units to seventy units. I was shocked to hear that news, as I previously thought fifty-four units was much too large for a town center, as it was to try and add sixteen more apartments to this complex. Doesn't make any sense to me at all for the following reasons. Following comments and recommendations pertain to the proposed seventy-unit apartment complex in Chelmsford Center. I believe it is being proposed at Griss Mill Apartments. I have lived here in Chelmsford for forty years now, and I bike by the proposed location for this development on the bike path, Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Bike Path, over two hundred days each year and every year. As a result, I know the center area very well, and I hope the following comments and recommendations will be incorporated into the final plans of this Griss Mill development. I have two major concerns about this proposed seventy-unit development proposal. The first concern is that it's about size, and the second is about the parking. I will detail my concerns and my recommended, recommended solutions to those concerns below. Size, this proposed seventy-unit apartment complex is too large for the particular area in Chelmsford Center. It would overpower the center with its size, i.e. height, much too tall, and the number of apartments that developers are trying to squeeze into this area. Not against development, it's just that I believe that any new development should fit within the environment within which it is being proposed, and that is not the case with this particular proposal. My recommendations to the addressed size concern are as follows. One, reduce the number of apartment units to thirty instead of seventy. This reduction of thirty units will make a significant difference as far as the appearance of this apartment complex is concerned. It would also result in lessening the number of cars that are trying to get into and out of the congested area every day. I believe that the developers would still earn a very good return on investment with thirty apartments, and that is a good thing. Two, lower the height of this apartment complex by completely eliminating the proposed top floor. This could easily accomplish the development, thirty apartments instead of fifty-four. This complex of thirty apartments wouldn't overpower Chelmsford Center in the way that seventy-unit proposal would. Parking situation in Chelmsford Center has been a concern for many years. There never seems to be enough parking in the center of town, especially during certain times of day. I believe that the developer has proposed sixty parking spaces in this apartment building to be located on the proposed complex. Through seventy apartments built, these sixty parking spaces underneath the building would be completely inadequate. My recommendation addressed parking concerns are as follows. With the proposed number of apartments approved, thirty, I would strongly recommend the developer provide sixty underground spaces while retaining the original proposed outdoor parking area. The sixty underground parking spaces would be proportioned as follows. The first thirty parking spaces should be numbered. One space designated marked for each thirty apartments. The other thirty underground spaces will be unmarked and available for people who actually live in the apartments above. They'll be visitors to the apartments. There could be a number of signs located by these thirty unmarked parking spaces, signs stating that they are reserved for residents and Griss Mill visitors. Two, as I bike on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Bike Path over two hundred days a year, I notice parking outside the Trinity Ambulance area of the current building at this location is used for variety purposes. I would estimate that there are one to six cars in this area near Bruce Freeman Rail Trail that are used by people who park there and then exercise and walk the BFRT. Therefore, I recommend that the developer retain as much of this outdoor parking as possible and to leave it open for everyone's use. That would be significantly helpful with the parking situation in the center, Chelmsford Center. This is assuming that my recommendations are set forth above about the size of the building and number of units. The underground spaces are all accepted, incorporated in the final design as an apartment complex. Thank you for taking the time to read my recommendations as set forth herein. I truly believe that if you incorporate them in your final design and plans, the Griss Mill development would be one that we all could admire and appreciate. Mike, you wanna read?
Sure, I'll take one. Dear Ms. Stansfield, as a lifelong resident and business owner in Chelmsford, I want to offer my support of the project being considered in Chelmsford Center. While many of my fellow residents are raising valid concerns that should be appropriately addressed, water, traffic, schools, et cetera, I feel strongly that the solution should not be to simply resist any growth and change. Chelmsford Center offers a unique charm but desperately needs a shot in the arm. The establishment of full-time residents in this area could be just that. As Chelmsford looks to grow its tax base and expands commercial enterprises, it is important to recognize what we will promote, uh, to recognize what will promote that. Having a town center with appealing residences will nurture further commercial development in the area. Please feel free to share my thoughts with the planning board and any other parties involved in this process, and thank you for all the hard work you do on behalf of our town. If I could ever be of assistance, please do not hesitate to reach out. Sincerely, this is Dr. Michael G. Gilchrist of Gilchrist, Savini, and Galvin.
Okay, I'll do the next one. This is from Ashley Bamford Fisher. Dear Evan and Colleen, I recently saw a posting on Facebook, Chelmsford News Group, about the proposed Griss Mill development in downtown Chelmsford. I am writing to tell you that I oppose such a development in the heart of downtown. I am a newer resident to town and often end up running my errands in Westford because the downtown traffic is already too congested at peak times. I fear that the housing complex will add greater stress to the downtown area, making it even less of an attraction for people to go to. I would like to support Chelmsford's small business owners as much as possible, but I will go elsewhere if the traffic becomes more of a problem. I urge you to work with the other town officials and oppose Griss Mill Housing Development. Thanks, Ashley Fisher, fourteen Davis Road, Chelmsford.
I have a letter from Deborah Levine. I don't even know where to begin. I hope people in town organize a band against this. The original proposed apartment complex was too much. The only benefit will be to developers. This is not going to increase our tax base, will not add revenue that would help to lower our already high tax rate. It will not help the elderly, it will not increase our property, that is, and for single-family homeowners near the center of town, it will decrease it for sure. It will. It helped us help us build new schools, which we need twenty years ago. I don't know who did the traffic study, but the traffic is already horrendous during the morning and afternoon rush hours. Hopefully, the renters of these units would be working and paying a good amount to live there, which means added, added traffic when they go by and come and to work every day. The design of the center and the patents and the traffic make it nearly impossible to enter and exit the Brick House or the parking behind Chelmsford Garden Gifts. The parking for seventy-plus units seemed grossly inadequate, and it's doubtful that the per-unit number of spaces would be increased with the number of additional units. It's a historic town center, we have inadequate bus and no train service for the area. I could possibly see this near a commuter rail station, but not here. There's no grocery store within walking distance. A building that size and height would be visible from historic sites such as our park and forefather's burial ground, which might also be a legitimate reason for appeal. I am from the city, I grew up in Somerville, my mom lives in Riviere. It happens over and over again, a large development is planned to be built. The proposed plan is to increase the maximum profits and generally gets no pushback. They build the supposed, supposed high-end buildings and never have adequate parking. They don't rent out the price they were supposed to, so some units later for full price go Section Eight. Then they have trouble filling all of the units at full price. Buildings look great when they go up, but five years later look worn and not maintained to the same standards. Taxes are too high to have a developer come in and build something that will lower property values. Increase traffic, change a small town and historic feel of the center and office very little in return. The apartments on one-ten where they are proposed pass on the promise that there would be very few children added to the schools since they were smaller apartments than school buses where they are filled with children from day one. When you factor in how much it costs to send one child to school, even half of the units have one child, the tax register and development would mainly go to funding those children. On top of all that, there would be a huge increase in demand for water, and we have had water bans every year for years. The average person conservatively uses roughly a hundred gallons of water per day. That's a lot of additional water for seventy units. Having brown day grass decreases the value of property, too. Developers are not worried about the impacts on our community, they see money. Don't let them fool you, Quincy have been fighting a losing battle in a much bigger city than we are. I attached the article as one example of developers expect opposition to push it aside, Deb Levine. Mike?
Sure. Dear ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lisa Perrin. My husband have lived and/or worked in Chelmsford for the last twenty-five years. I am writing in staunch opposition to the Griss Mill apartment proposal in Chelmsford Center. This town has changed its look and feel too drastically over the past ten years, and continuing on this past path must stop. The center of town has gone from a quaint center to a cluster of chaos, and this addition will exacerbate the situation exponentially. And for what? Schools. These apartments will bring people with school-aged children. I do not believe for one second the proposal's suggestion that these are going to attract young professionals with no children or empty nesters. Look at the bus stop for Kensington and the new apartments on one-ten, see how many children, how many kids live there. This will be more of the same in an area that certainly does not need it. Traffic. The center is already a nightmare most of the time. With the light cycles and so on, I cannot possibly fathom adding a hundred-plus more commuters coming and going during rush hour with this new apartment complex. Additionally, there is already no parking in the center, and trying to get to the bike path and find a spot to park is nearly impossible on a nice Saturday afternoon. Don't think for one second that these apartments won't be using these, those spaces with visitors or their own additional vehicles. Water. The town's water supply is already taxed with frequent water bans. I live in South Chelmsford and will be shocked if within the next month that we have a ban in place. Where is the water going to come from for another massive residential property? Charm appeal of the town is being lost, and this project will only deteriorate it more. Part of the buying appeal in Chelmsford used to be the old-fashioned family community with parades and ballgames at local fields and charming, and a charming center tree lighting at Christmas. But adding units like this will make the center even more congested, and that appeal will be further reduced. We need to look to other communities, not Lowell and Burlington, but Westford and Carlisle, and keep in touch with our quaint and historic appeal and value and preserve that rather than approve projects like this that are more in line with cities. This project is only a win for the developers and people looking to maximize their bottom line at the expense of the residents of Chelmsford. Thank you for your consideration. I am pleased to answer any questions, Lisa Perrin, forty-eight Parkerville.
Okay, this one is from Andrea Seer. As a Chelmsford resident, it has come to my attention that there is a proposal to build a seventy-unit apartment building in the town center. I have many concerns for this proposal, and I'm wondering what I can do as a resident to get this declined. As a commuter, center traffic is already a nightmare during rush hour. As a commuter, center traffic is already a nightmare during rush hour, and adding an entrance/exit to a residential complex right in the heart of the problem will not help the situation. I'm also concerned that this will diminish the preservation of quote-unquote historic Chelmsford feel. In turn, bringing down property values. I am sure that it will be a beautiful building, but this is just not practical location for it. I hope that my voice can be heard. Thank you, Andrea Seer.
Next letter is from Leanne Newmeyer. Hello, Evan, I'm writing to you in regard to proposed Gris Mill apartments. I moved here a year ago from Los Angeles, California, partly because my parents moved here several years ago and upon many visits, found myself gradually falling in love with the charm in this lovely new town. But mainly because my parents were growing elderly and I needed to be here to help care for them. All of my friends associated back, associates back in Los Angeles and those in film business in which I've worked, thought I was crazy to move here, and I said I would miss Los Angeles. To be honest, I don't miss Los Angeles at all. Chelmsford is the complete opposite of where I came from, and I had to drive for two hours every day to get to work while in L.A. on their congested freeways. Believe me, when I moved here, it was a dream not to have to deal with traffic any longer. When I found out about the Gris Mill apartments proposal, my heart sank. How or why anyone would turn this utterly beautifully historic lovely town into a sort of version of what I just moved away from is not only destructive but truly bad idea. Anyone who stands for community and respects the history as well as cares for those who have made this town the lovely, safe place that it is today can easily see that. I know a lot of people are concerned about traffic aspects of the location of the Gris Mill apartments, and I share that concern. Again, I moved here to care for my parents. Let me tell you something, when my father had a stroke heart attack last spring, the response from the local fire department medics and police was within minutes, life-saving minutes. When my elderly mother fell again after calling 911, the response was fast. Chelmsford began, being a town made up of many elderly and/or older people, I cannot tell you how vital having this, that sort of response is. The town center is now filled with more people and cars. I shudder to think that, think of what a delay to a 911 call would cause, especially during the winter months and the ice and snow factored in. If you make a call like that in Los Angeles, believe me, you are lucky if the p, police or medic show up within the hour, and as you know, it's nearly always sunny and eighty degrees there. I phoned the police once and they arrived four hours later due to heavy traffic congestion. It's just unfortunately that, that way it is. I've seen neighbors die in Los Angeles due to the slowing down of rescue. That is just one aspect. Then there is the noise. I'm not saying that those who may move into Gris Mills would party animals, but that was another aspect that turned me to Chelmsford. The peace and quiet, that overall calm that exists here. In Los Angeles, there was a constant of honking car horns, loud voices, and just general city sounds. Of course, Chelmsford and Los Angeles are worlds apart in their examples I am giving, and I feel, felt that the need to point that out. If this town continues to build and cram things together, all for the sake of making money, go on to this country's small and safe towns as well as wildlife. It is my hope that you will not allow the seventy-unit apartment building into what is already a small quaint lovely town. Just the idea already saddens and angers so many of my neighbors as well as myself. Please do not destroy what is already so chosen, so close to perfection. I have been bragging to my friends back in Los Angeles about Chelmsford, I mean literally bragging about the quiet serenity and the small town charm that exists here, to the point where they are jealous of me. I found a slice of heaven here in Chelmsford, please do not destroy it. Most sincerely, Leanne Newmeyer.
Mike? Sure. Ms. Stansfield, again, you seem to be getting the letters. I'm writing you, to you today concerning the proposal to build apartments in the center of town. I have major concerns over the viability of this project. The main concern I have is traffic. I live in South Chelmsford and need to travel through the center multiple times a day. There is already a lot of traffic in that area. It is already difficult to get to the other side of town. The traffic pattern going around the library in order to come back in the Route Four South direction is already problematic. If we add these apartments, they will only increase traffic to the point of making it unbearable to go from South Chelmsford to the rest of Chelmsford. The only exit from the apartments will be by Chantilly Place and will route all traffic around the library no matter which direction they need to go. This will contest that area and further back up traffic trying to turn from Route Four North. The increase in traffic will likely result in people avoiding the center and have a negative impact for businesses in the center of town. If it becomes easier to think, uh, travel to Bill Ricker or Westford than to go through the center, that is what people will begin to do. The aesthetics of the building do not match with our beautiful historic center. The new building would be a looming modern eyesore that would ruin the beauty of our center. I don't understand why a building like the Unitarian Universalist Church isn't allowed to build an elevator shaft on the back of the nonhistoric portion of their building, along with other restrictions to our already existing structures. Yet we would allow this too-large monstrosity to completely alter the look and feel of the center. I know there are many in town who feel this way. We don't need more housing directly in the center. We need more businesses that will attract those who already live in town. A row of nice stores or restaurants with facades to match our historic center, or a supermarket for people on this side of town would be much more beneficial to us as a community. Please pass along my concerns. Thank you, Carissa Campbell.
Okay, this one's from Morris Snow. I have lived in Chelmsford for twenty years. I am happy for downtown merchants to have the business that fifty-four rental units will bring. Now I hear there is a proposal to raise it to seventy. It seems like too many unless some are going to be for lower incomes. I would tolerate even the crazier traffic if that's what adding sixteen units does. If they are only for pure income generation for the property owner, then I say we gain nothing. Thank you. Morris Snow, 41 Old Stage Road, Chelmsford.
Next letter is from Sheila Apolito. Hello, my name is Sheila Apolito, I've lived in Chelmsford twenty-two years, and I'm writing in ferocious opposition to the Gris Mill apartment proposal. My concerns of area include the following. Schools. How the proposed units affect are already high class sizes by and Parker and Chelmsford High School. Traffic. The center is already frequent, frequently stopped dead for three to four light cycles, so only aggravate the situation. Water. The town's water supply is already taxed with frequent water bans. Aesthetics. The developers' rendering of the multi-story seventy-plus unit structure seems vastly undersized. The real structure would tower over the existing structures, especially the antique buildings located there. Environmental. What happens to the trickling brook that winds through the center and, at that exact location? Apartment overload. One look at the monstrosity that is Kensington Apartments, which by the way is close proximity to proposed development and has already taxed schools, traffic patents, and water usage, leaves me wondering how many vast apartment complexes in one small area of town are appropriate. Historic charm. Many residents cite the beauty of the old buildings and the town's commitment to honoring its history, including the renovate, renovated Old Town Hall is part of Chelmsford's appeal. A multi-story complex and its attendant vehicles, trash, water usage, sewer uses, and increased carbon footprint will degrade that charm. Thank you for your consideration, I'm pleased to answer any questions, Sheila Apolito.
Okay, uh, this one's from Laura Marshall. Dear Ms. Stansfield, uh, please share our concerns about this proposed development with the Chelmsford Planning Board. My husband and I have lived in Chelmsford for eighteen years, and we have three major concerns about this proposed development. Traffic. We live on Putnam Avenue, just south of the center, drive through the center several times a day. The proposed plan would have a profound impact on the traffic in the center. I can often, I often go out of my way to let some poor driver who has been sitting at Cushing Place out. If that becomes a major thoroughfare for the proposed seven units, the snarl of backup traffic will push out into all the intersections that converge in the center of town. I can't imagine any traffic plan that would work. This would negatively impact not only the residents but also the businesses in the center, as people will strive, start to drive around the center to avoid the traffic. Number two, aesthetics. The visual impact, excuse me, the, the visual the developers provide of the proposed building across from the old Chelmsford Hotel building highlights this odd addition to what already looks to me like a crowded place. But at least it stands now. The traveling rhino, Brick House Pizza, and the Chelmsford Hotel are in scale with each other. This proposed new development overwhelms that lot and all the buildings around it. The town has spent significant effort to improve aesthetics of the downtown area, and don't think this proposal is in keeping with that effort. Three, smart growth. The development of our downtown is important. I am not opposed to development or to apartments. I have, I like having a growing town. It means that we are doing something right. But if we develop in that way, that seriously inhibits the use of the downtown by both traffic problems and overcrowding spaces, then we will stall out that growth and the center will collapse. Please consider asking the developer to alter the project, both in scale and style. Sincerely, Laura and Steve Marshall, 8 Putnam Avenue, Chelmsford.
Mike, you have two left, why don't you read both? Okay. To whom it may concern, as a resident of Chelmsford with small children in both the neighboring preschool and at Center Elementary, I have grave concerns about another seventy housing units going in our beautiful center. Traffic is already a grave concern at any point of the day, and adding another seventy units would be detrimental. Also, we are lucky enough to have a beautiful bike path, but who will use it if that you can't even cross the street with so much traffic buzzing around our quiet center? I was more than happy to see sidewalks go in and the speed bumps, but added a housing development doesn't, does not seem as added value to a current walkable downtown center. I would love to see more shops and restaurants, but this development project could completely change that, that field. There are other places within town that would benefit from further development, but the center is not that space. I moved to Chelmsford because of the small-town feel, but adding this housing project would alter that feel, and I do not agree with that approach. This is Catherine Barton. On one more, greetings. I am writing to express concern over the proposed development called Gris Mill Apartments in the town center. This will make our town center unusable, less parking, and much more traffic. Please do not approve the development, there must be some other smaller development that can be built that would actually improve the center. Please do what you can to stop this development. Thank you, Carrie Wetzel, Precinct Nine, Town Meeting Rep.
Okay, this is from Lucille Fortia. Please, please, please do not allow the behemoth known as Cushing Place to be built in Chelmsford Center. It will impact our schools' traffic and infrastructure. Keep the village unique and small as it was intended to be. Thank you, Lucille Fortia, Sixth Beach Street, North Chelmsford, Mass.
Last, the last letter, from Laurel Hartzell. I'm a Chelmsford resident concerned about the location of the housing development. There's a beautiful brook in the area, will residents be denied access to it now that the site will become part of someone's residence? What are the considerations on traffic? I live on Route 110, and many times it takes at least ten minutes to sit on two red lights in order to turn from Center Street into Littleton Road. With the seventy-plus cars in this location and such poor traffic patterns, it will have to wait even longer. Last but not least, how can someone think that the three-story building would be, would beautify our town? It will kill the little charm that is left in our, that area of town. I hope that this recommendation, sorry, I hope this is reconsidered and we neighbors get a chance to appeal. Thank you for listening to us, Laurel Hartzell. We're done, sorry about that, we had to get through this.
That's okay, there should be, Colleen, there should also be another letter from Lieutenant Spence from the Police Department that was issued to you.
Okay.
That was an updated letter also, if we could look for that.
We'll look for it in the file, you can go on with your presentation.
Absolutely. Um, so to get back to, um, our num, our second point was to discuss the traffic counts. So we wanted to wait until after both school vacations were up. We had Massachusetts School Vacation followed by New Hampshire, to make sure none of the, that was affected on Cushing Place. So we did traffic counts, um, in the morning peak hours and in the evening peak hours to basically count everybody that came in and out of Cushing, in and out of behind Jack's Retail Buildings, in and out of Ann's Transportation Company, the movements that they made. So the traffic engineer will go over that. Um, we also talked about the gate placement, and I have an exhibit tonight that shows where the gate would be located if we were to locate one, um, and also those additional letters that we were requested to get from both fire and police speaking to the gate. Um, and last, the compact spaces, I want to talk about the compact spaces and where I feel within your bylaw that they can be allowed, um, and talk about the alternative to doing the compact spaces if that becomes necessary. Um, and lastly, talk about the, the payment in lieu. Um, so I'm going to turn it over right now to ta, have Mark talk a little bit about the elevations that were requested, um, and the information from historic and also the cut of the, the building.
Yeah. No. Thank you, Katie. Again, for the record, my name is Mark Pelletier, I'm with Mogul Architects. So at the, at the previous meeting, um, it was hard for everyone to kind of grasp the concept of, um, the elevations not really changing drastically or at all. And so what we've done here is provided a side-by-side comparison of the previously approved concept, which is the, the concept on the lower part of the screen with the proposed new concept of a four-story, uh, structure. So we've added some datum lines here for reference, just so you can make the visual connection and comparison. So the green line, we'd call that zero, that's the average grade with the exception of where you would enter in over at the, uh, parking garage level that faces Cushing Place. And so the, what you're seeing here on the, the top proposed concept is the height by zoning definition of forty-five, uh, I'm sorry, it's, it's actually forty-four feet to that ridge line of the roof. That red line is imposed on the previous scheme here, and you can see that, and it is, uh, about three to four feet lower than the perceived roof, but as you can see overall, it's, it's kind of keeping a pretty decent balance. The purple line here is represent, on the, um, previous scheme is lower, is showing the average roof by zoning. So on a sloped roof, uh, you're taking the midpoint of that roof, uh, slope as your average height.
Mark, just before you turn, I wanted to say, because it says forty-five feet there, and that's specifically because by definition, it's actually the average grade around the building to the mean height. So even though the building itself is forty-four feet tall, I added a foot around the exterior of the building to bring you to the forty-five, that's why I think.
Oh, thank, thank you, Katie. Yeah, so that forty-four feet that I had mentioned would be from the finished floor. So this is a comparison of the two, uh, cross-sections of the building, and as you can see, um, the image on the right is the previous, um, approved scheme, and I just did the profile of the building with the sloped roof. And what you see here is, we call that a tray ceiling, so it's basically a face, a fake, um, gable, that if you would imagine the gable would continue on and then meet at a ridge line. And so what we were proposing in the previous concept is to cut that, drop it, roof down and build a tray into the roof to conceal the rooftop equipment. And so what we've done to, uh, gain the additional floor in the, is we've lowered the floor-to-floor heights, um, six inches as previously discussed, and then took the roof line here, marrying that roof line and, um, concealing the, the top floor in, into the mansard roof. Now the mansard roof, uh, we have some, we're still studying this because I think we can make it even more acceptable by pulling it, pulling the, the line of the windows back off the, um, off the face of the building and being more in line with the traditional mansard roof concept. And you, we'll, we can discuss that further. But what we've, this next image is an enlarged swath of the front elevation of the building. We met with the Historic Commission, uh, they were very graceful with their time, and we, we had a very fruitful production, productive meeting. I feel like the project's being steered in a, in a great, uh, direction, and we've come up with some, some of the things that we've discussed were the porches, the roof, the cornices, the eaves, the windows, and how to address all of those things. But at the end of the meeting, the goal, the ultimate goal was this is a new building that needs to look and feel traditional. And traditional architecture is, is a language, language of its own, right? And so if you compare it with any language, the vocabulary of the building is its elements, the windows, the doors, the eaves, the cornices, all of those things. And the grammar that we would apply to this is the rules, the rules, uh, in which we would incorporate all of those features. So we started to study those features on the building, uh, and we've, you can see here that we started to. and freeze boards, slimming down the trim, the casework around the perimeter, and then adding a backband onto the very detailed edge of the windows themselves. So these are very custom, customizable details that we're going to start looking into and getting more, more detail developing as the project goes along. But you can see the windows begin to start to bring together the composition and start to look and feel a little bit more of the traditional sense. And then we studied the cornice and the eaves, and that, that's an important piece because the cornice really kind of sets the tone for the architecture, and the proportions of those cornices really need to be spot-on. And the previous versions, you know, we suggested something, and we, we, you know, we made a fairly strong effort to make a traditional-looking building. But now we're starting to get into the details of it and really make sure that this all starts to work together. So we have the rakes coming back in, so the rake and the, and the cornices here start to match in proportion like a tradition, what you would see in any traditional architecture around town. And then that carries, that theme carries throughout the building. The dormers themselves, we put a little bit more effort into, and it's going to be a bit of a tech, technological balance because we want those to, the proportion of the dormers really need to work with the mansard roof. They need to be scaled down tight because that's how you would traditionally see that. Ours, the previous scheme was much larger, but we feel that with modern materials, we can achieve that with spray and insulation, that kind of thing. And I have to admit that that proportion is very, very comfortable to us, and we're beginning to like that a lot. And then the roof slope has a traditional four over 12. And let's see. I think that's, well, I guess Mike, Mike can come up and speak about the traffic.
Hello, my name's Michael Santos. I'm a transportation engineer with Howard Stein Hudson. As a follow-up to the last hearing, we were asked to conduct traffic counts along Cushing Place, specifically in relation to the Transportation Company parking lot shown right here. As you can see, we have Central Square, Cushing Place, we have a couple of commercial parking lots to the, to the south, to the north, and we also counted vehicles entering and exiting the upper parking lot, which connects out to Littleton Road. So these arrows show all of the different traffic movements that we counted. We counted all the ins and outs at Cushing Place. Right turns in, left turns in, right turns out, and then, we didn't count any left-turning vehicles out there, although we recognize that sometimes that happens. Then we counted all the ins and outs at these two parking lots and further up along Cushing Place. We conducted a traffic counts on Wednesday, May 3rd, in the morning from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and then in the evening from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., which represent the peak hours, the peak commuting hours, and also represent the, the peak hours of traffic for, for the So I'll just go over the, what we came up with, and I apologize if the numbers are a little bit difficult to see here. So this is, this represents the morning peak hour from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. This hour was slightly higher traffic volumes than 8:00 to 9:00, so we'll focus on this one. What we're showing here is, in the morning, we had seven vehicles turning right into Cushing Place, four turning left, and 11 vehicles exiting. Of those 11 vehicles, some of them came from this Transportation Company down here. You see nine outs, five, five entrances, and then this parking lot had very little activity. And then there were some vehicles that would travel through Cushing Place all the way up to Central Square and vice versa. The other things that we also observed, the maximum queue here, we, we didn't see more than one vehicle waiting here to exit onto Central Square. And also, you know, this, this crosswalk right here is a raised crosswalk, which helps reduce speeds. So the speeds were generally pretty low as you approached Cushing Place. We did qualitative observations, you know, just kind of checked the speeds of the vehicles traveling along Central Square, and they range from, you know, between 20 to 30 miles per hour, generally around 25 miles per hour. And also, because there are traffic signals to the north, there's typically not a steady flow of traffic along Central Square. You kind of get a slug, then you get a, then you get a significant gaps for vehicles to exit Cushing Place. So there were no real issues in the morning for vehicles exiting Cushing Place, and that's, that's going to be the peak hour of this project's exiting, exiting rush during the morning. So as you can see, we have 11 vehicles exiting. In our previous memo that we submitted back in March, we gave you a trip generation analysis which showed we have a maximum of 28 vehicles in the morning exiting. So if we have the 28 to this 11, we can see up to maybe 40 vehicles exiting during the morning peak hour as a maximum. Because, you know, you, you do see gaps in the traffic caused by the traffic signals up here, and just from our observations that, you know, there's really no existing queues there. We don't think that, we, we don't feel that there are going to be any significant traffic impacts right at this location. We do understand that, you know, there are some slight traffic increases, but compared to the existing traffic volumes out there, it's a very minimal increase throughout the area. Then if we go to the PM, in the PM, the four to five PM peak hour was slightly higher than five to six. Again, we're showing, you know, slightly higher exiting vehicles, 19 exiting Cushing Place, 16 entering from the north, and then nine entering from the south, turning left. And again, we have no left-turning vehicles exiting. You know, the, the Transportation Company down here had slightly higher activity with, you know, 13 ins and 10 outs, and then this commercial parking lot had slightly higher activity with six ins and seven outs. And then we did have some, you know, some minimal activity on Cushing Place through traffic. And again, in the PM, the entrances are the, the peak, is the peak direction. So the exiting vehicles in the PM, we estimated approximately 16 exiting vehicles from this project, so that would, you know, add up to 35, about 35 exiting vehicles. And again, similar to the morning, you know, we're seeing gaps in traffic caused by the traffic signals to the north, slow vehicle speeds, you know, due to the, all of the raised speed, the raised crosswalks throughout Central Square. So, you know, they're doing their job. They're, you're seeing, you're not seeing vehicles speed through this area. And again, let's see, you know, the maximum queue that we saw from these 19 vehicles was three, and that was for a total of about 10 to 15 seconds. And again, the majority of the time, there were no vehicles waiting. You know, the 19 vehicles represents one, one vehicle every, every three minutes or so on average. So generally, you know, there, if you go out there, you're not going to see a vehicle waiting. You might see one or two, but for the most part, there's nobody waiting there. You know, we're, we're basically doubling it, so we'll see some slight increases, but nothing that this, this intersection can't handle. And we're confident that, you know, the, despite all, you know, despite the traffic issues out here right now, you know, these increases are very minimal compared to what's happening out there. So we, you know, we, we know that, you know, exiting vehicles will be, they'll be able to exit safely. We don't really see any major, major traffic issues here, although, you know, it's, it's hard to say that with all of the, the concerns with the existing traffic volumes, but, you know, in the end, you're not going to see, it's 70 units, you're not going to see 70 vehicles exiting at once. This is, you know, this is based on actual data, so, you know, that's about it. So we provided you with a memo dated, it's dated May 9th, so that was just yesterday. If you haven't had a chance to read it, that's, you know, basically what the memo says. It just summarizes our counts. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
And I apologize for the late getting the memo. It was the two school vacations that interacted, and we didn't want to, we wanted to be conservative and make sure we got the full amount of traffic that came through there, which is why we just did this Wednesday. I want to talk about the gate. So as you can see, this is, this is where I had envisioned putting the gate. If we were to put a gate here, that would allow for people to not get very far before they knew they would have to turn around to go out the entrance here. So this seemed like the logical place that we would put a gate if necessary. This is the exhibit that I sent to both police and fire for their letters, and I believe Colleen found the police letter.
Yeah, so I'll read that since it's directly related. So, Chelse Police Department, Special Services Division, May 4th, addition of gate and possibility of changing, do not enter signs for 11 Cushing Place. Dear Planning Board members, Division of Special Services reviewed the possible addition of a gate to the site plans from the Town of Chelse Planning Board for 11 Cushing Place. Upon careful review of the plans, the Chelse Police Department does not recommend the addition of a gate to the proposed project. In a letter sent April 5th, 2017, the Chelse Police Department recommended requirement of a do-not-enter signs when exiting Griss Mill Apartments heading towards the Brick House parking lot. The current exit in front of the Brick House onto Littleton Road cannot handle additional traffic without significant light enhancements to the intersection. The current traffic pattern has already caused major traffic safety concerns due to driver confusion exiting the site onto Littleton Road and traffic congestion. In addition, if, if the gate was installed, the gate would cause confusion with motorists, and the majority of the Griss Mill Apartment residents would now exit onto Littleton Road causing more traffic safety issues on Littleton Road. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know. Lieutenant Collins C. Spence, Special Services Division, Chelse Police Department.
So, basically, we want to, we understand the need that, or the concern for the traffic and the, and the flow of traffic out to Littleton and the flow of traffic out to Cushing. So we'd like the ability, and I know that we're already there talking about, it was a condition of the previous approval at the 54 units, to look at traffic in a year. We'd like the ability to set up for the gate and basically put in all the infrastructure needed for the gate, and maybe not actually physically construct the gate, and then when we come back to you in a year, if the gate is necessary. I don't feel that the police and fire were completely against it. I feel that they were, they were cautious of it. I feel that if it was necessary in a year.
I'm going to stop you there.
Yep.
I'm the one that brought it up.
Mm-hmm.
And yes, to that request on my part. I can't speak for the rest of the board members, but we'll put that in decision that you will at least pull a conduit, because to pull a conduit or whatever you need to pull underground, it would be a lot cheaper to do it in construction phase than later, if, if it's necessary to put it in. So I would agree to that for the parking.
As would I.
Just a general.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Monica? Next topic.
Okay. Next topic. Next topic is the compact parking spaces. So I believe you have a memo before you which shows you two areas that, one that I've recognized in the past with this board regarding being able to waive basically the entire article of your parking bylaw by special permit, another specifically to the Center Village Overlay District. There's also the same provision under Article 5 that speaks to the same waiver within the Center Village District, I believe. So there's multiple locations that I feel that you have the ability to waive by special permit the parking requirements. If the board is uncomfortable with that, I have provided an alternative, and I can provide it to you tonight in paper form, and I could bring it up on the screen, the alternative layout plan, which shows the same amount of parking spaces, all fully compliant with very minor changes to the plan. Essentially, the sidewalk gets closer to the building in a couple of places. I was trying to be green. I was trying to be innovative. The project still works. We still have the same amount of parking, and all the spaces can be compliant. If the board is uncomfortable with that waiver, I can present that plan to you tonight. I can show it to you on the screen in red. It doesn't change the project. It was just something that I was looking at to be environmentally friendly. We're, we're within a redevelopment area. We're within the riverfront area. So I feel that if the board is able to waive that by special permit, if the board is uncomfortable with that or doesn't like the idea of compact parking, the alternative layout does not change anything on this plan besides minor stuff that we could pick up upon as built.
So just with your point to that, just point to where the compact spaces are.
So there's a few here in this corner. There's four here. I believe there's one or two here, and then there's a few here along the front of the building. So what happens is is this curve gets a little closer to the building, so there's very little, in one little area, there's very little landscaping right there next to the building. In this area, the same thing, the sidewalk gets pretty close to the building, and right here, this crosswalk moves down about half a space.
Can you show us the other one just?
Yeah. It might be hard to see on the screen. I can put it up there, and I can also give you a paper copy. What I did is just show you the changes in red, so I have two here, so.
That'll wake them up.
That'll wake them up. No special permits needed, less chance of contention.
Yeah, this is part of the red. Basically, the changes are here, here, and here, and they're very slight.
So are you saying that this is equal to the number of spaces in the previous plan?
It is.
So I understand that by special permit, we can do some things with parking based on the Village Overlay and, or the Center Village, Center Overlay District. My first impression is if you keep the same number of parking spaces with the nine-foot wide, you should do that. But let's, let's poll the board. Monica?
I'm fine with compact spaces in this, in this particular location, so I'm fine with the special permit.
Glenn?
I'd rather stick with the full size.
Ed?
Stick with the full size, less chance of future problems.
Mike?
I'm not particularly concerned about having a few compact spaces, so I'm, I'm fine either way.
And?
Full size.
Man?
I'm committed to, to full-size spaces in, in shopping areas and such because of loading and unloading, but this isn't. I'm okay with compact spaces.
I'm going to go for full-size, so that's, and Monica, you said.
Compact.
So it's 4-3, so.
So that's your new layout and materials plan.
Yeah. And maybe for the future, this is something that, that this board looks at the codifying in the, in the bylaw for, for future use. Okay?
So we could, yeah, certainly we could reference this alternate plan.
All right.
Okay.
The engineering is very minor. And then lastly, regarding the pilo, I think, I think we've been very clear. I want to go back to the number of units, first of all. I know Mark mentioned, and you probably all looked at the new elevation and said, where are all the utilities going to go? Because we used to have that section of roof. Well, the 70 units didn't just come by adding on a fourth floor. There's a huge hole in the back of this building, because the 70 units is a 70 number. It's not a fourth floor. It's 70 units that makes this project work. There's a big hole basically in the back of this fourth floor, which allows for us to hide all the utilities still within the roof line, so you're not going to see them exterior of the building. We're here seeking the 70 units, the 16 extra units from the previous 54-unit approval because this project didn't work. There is no money. We've offered the $20,000 per new unit. That's, that's what we can do. That's what we can stick to. We realize there's four new additional units that under the, under the payment in lieu would be four new additional affordables following the previous submission. We figured in the $20,000 per unit to be consistent with the previous approval, which we can do. We're having, I mean, we're having a hard time making this project work, so that's, that's where we stand. The pilo cannot go up.
Okay. So let me, I'm going to ask you some quick questions based on some of the letters. One, and I want you to be, these, some of these things have already been approved from, from the
Certainly.
... previous project. One, the path along the brook walk and what you're doing to the brook, quickly.
Sure. Nothing, we're doing nothing to the brook, and we already have conservation approval for the brook. We are providing a brook walk along the top of the brook, which will be a pervious material, which will be in a public easement for everyone to use.
For everyone to use. And you're going to clean the invasive along the brook?
All the invasives will be cleaned along the brook, and there's also some stones that have fallen in that the Conservation Commission has asked us to replace, to, to pull up and replace along the.
There was comments regarding. There was comments regarding shared parking for the bike path?
Yes.
In the previous approval, you had mentioned that. Could you reiterate that briefly?
Certainly. For the project, there are 60 units within the building, under the building, and there's also spaces exterior of the building for 138 spaces total on this project. The entire row of spaces along the bike path are public spaces. They are signed public. They are for public use, and there's an easement provided to allow people to come into the property, use those spaces whenever, however, whether it be for the neighboring businesses, whether it be for the bike path. Those 20-some-odd spaces will remain signed for public benefit, for public use.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to the board for questions. I can either start with you, Nan, or I can start with Monica.
You can start with me.
Okay.
I don't have a lot. I do have a question for Mark, and I have a question for Mike. And the question for Mark is, I really like what you're proposing architecturally after the discussion with the Historical Commission, and I think it addresses the concerns I had in the previously approved version of this building. In that you are still working on these details, what is our assurance that they will actually be included in the construction?
The plan is submitted as part of public record and will be a fact within any kind of decision that you approve tonight. So all of those elements have been proposed to you and are within your files as facts.
Yeah, and I would say that any, anything, as it develops, it's only gonna enhance, we're not playing, nothing's gonna be drawn away from the design at this point. We're just gonna plan to build on that.
So, we already have an approved version of this building that is basically modern, contemporary urban architecture in the center of town, and the proposal that's in front of us is a building that is visually no larger, has been modified to be consistent with our in-town architecture. Yeah.
I mean, we've made, we're making a significant effort to try to stick to the traditional details.
It's just a huge effort. My question from Mike in regards to the traffic study. You showed us the volume of traffic that was directly affected in terms of going into and out of Cushing Place. What were the traffic volumes on Central Square at that point in time that these were, that this traffic was merging into?
We, well, we didn't count the Central Square traffic volumes. We just counted the volumes on Cushing Place, but I do have, we did pull some traffic numbers from the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, so I think in general, on a daily basis, you're seeing approximately 10,000, maybe, I'd say about 10,000 vehicles per day travel through there. And, you know, typically, you see about, maybe the peak hours represent about 10% of that, so, you know, a rough estimate might be 1,000 vehicles per hour. But again, we didn't count that, but that's, you know, that's probably a good estimate, so maybe I'd say between 800 to 1,200 vehicles per hour, just based on the data that we have.
Okay.
And we're, you know, we're adding approximately, what did I say? You know, at the most, you know, seven, about 30 vehicles per hour or so to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Henry?
I don't have any great questions. I do have a comment, and I wish I had said something in the last meeting, was that we were asked about the payment in lieu of, we had made, also had made the statement, not only did we have evidence, we also had the right in our, in our previe to take and adjust it for projects that we thought were special, and this had special criteria to it, and that was one of the reasons why we had done it, and I just thought I'd let that get out there, too. Other than that, I'm good.
Mike?
Okay. I like the changes that you've made to the architectural detail, and I was trying to figure out what it was, and I kinda came up to it's 1902 with a heavy splash of 1875.
Pretty much.
Did I get that right? It's an interesting mix, but I like it, and I do think it's an improvement. I do have one question about the mansard ick roof. What's the angle on that?
It's 412.
412?
The shed dormers are 412. The, actually.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's pretty vertical right now, and what we like to do as we further develop it is introduce more of a compound slope, which is more traditional of the mansard. There's many types of roofs, but this is considered a mansard roof, and it would have either a splayed or a compound angle, which we would introduce it, and this section doesn't represent that very well because we're showing where the window would bump out there, but it would come down, and then right at the base of the window, it starts to have a steeper pitch.
Okay, yeah.
So, long answer, short version is, we want to pull that back at least a foot and try to increase that slope and make it more pronounced so that it's more in the traditional sense of a mansard roof.
Yeah, that's kinda where I was going, and I'm glad that that's the direction you're going in it, and you'll, so you'll add a splash of Italianate.
Well, we, in fairness, we haven't decided if it would be a slope or too sharp.
Yeah, too, or a curve. It's done both ways.
Yeah, it's done both ways. We really want to study that a little bit further and see how that really works out on, this image doesn't show the building ends, but.
I get, yeah, I get the idea.
We're more interested on how that makes that corner look and feel.
Okay. Good. That's about my comments. I think everything else has been discussed to death or will be in a minute, so.
Why are you looking at me? Monica?
Oh, you're jumping to me.
Yeah. We'll come back to the old timers afterwards.
Sounds good to me. I mean, I appreciate.
Don't look at me!
So, I appreciate you meeting with historic and adding historic elements that dress it up and make it, give it accessories that more match with the historic side. I still have an issue with the scale of the property and building as it relates to the buildings in close proximity, and I think adding that extra floor makes it even more pronounced. And I'm talking from a pedestrian scale. You have Brick House, which is significantly shorter. You have the other, you know, the other store next to it, I can't remember the name right now.
Rhino.
Thank you. Traveling Rhino, which is significantly smaller than this. And again, I appreciate the accessories, but again, I feel like we're putting earrings on an elephant in the middle of the historic area. And I always hear about how we're maintaining the character, we want to maintain the character of the town. We can have growth. We can have housing. Housing is a catalyst for economic development, and it should be here. This is just large. It's a very pretty large elephant. So, that's one of my concerns. The pilo amount that we came up with and that you, the rest of the board, was sufficient, it was sufficient, and it was based upon the 56 units, and that was considered wash. Now this is above and beyond, so it sounds like we should be starting afresh. The amount that was calculated and the amount that you said that you could afford was based upon that, and we don't plan for your budget. We plan for the area, and we plan for what our needs. We're not planning for your budget. And quite frankly, in the, earlier in the development process, you should have had better numbers. I'm sorry that you didn't. But again, we have to look at this for years to come. We have to deal with the repercussions of this. We have our housing bylaw, which is necessary for housing that's needed for more people in this town, and now we're building a very expensive, pretty elephant in the middle of the village square, and I have a major problem with that.
Glenn?
One thing I got on the, on the public parking where the bike path is, during construction, can that be left to stay open the entire?
No, absolutely not. And we've been meeting with the, with the BPAC, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, to discuss what's going to happen during construction, because those spaces are now going to be essentially upgraded. Right now, it's falling apart pavement, gravel, barely any curb, no drainage whatsoever. It's pretty much a big mess. All that area is now gonna be paved, drained, striped, curbed, lit, landscaped as part of this project. So, in the process, we've talked to Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee about looking at signage, looking at alternatives to parking while this project is in use, understanding that these spaces are going to be, again, public spaces and better at the end of this. So it's like any construction project, yes, they'll have to be redirected during the process, and we've talked a little bit about how that could be done to make sure that people are still able to use it, obviously, and have close proximity parking. So, that has been discussed.
Where the parking is so tight in that whole area, when, I just feel when you cut that off completely, the businesses that rely on that area that have for years for their parking, you might as well just tell them to close their doors, they're out of business.
No, so as part of this, we've talked to all the businesses in the area, or we've talked to significantly the owner, the landowners. We met with Brick House before the project even came before the planning board, and I know Charlie is here tonight. Obviously, Jack is one of the property owners, and he has businesses that he was also concerned about. We looked at additional parking on their properties. We looked at, we drew plans for that. We looked at access. This is a private property, a private development, and the fact that other people have used it for parking for years is understood, but it's a private property. I mean, this is the existing condition right now.
Isn't that, isn't that parking that goes along with the bike path part of the railroad's property?
Yes, but you can't access it and use the parking on the railroad's property because the property line is right behind these cars. So to close the, just that area off, you wouldn't be able to use it like it's used today. You have to enter this property, and the easements will be given to do so as part of this project. So currently, there's no even easements to go through this property to go from Brick House all the way out to Cushing. People just have done it forever, and that'll be, that'll be put in writing in legal terms as an easement as part of this project. So it will be legitimate, it'll be legitimate therefore after.
All right, I'm not too happy about that, but this is what it is, I suppose.
There's also significant parking across the street that nobody uses.
So, I'm just gonna step in for one second. Would you be willing to put up a sign at that entrance directing people to parking by Town Hall as well as the public parking behind the Sovereign Bank?
Certainly. Yes.
I think that will help.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to work with BPAC on the plantings and the irrigation and the directions. Absolutely.
You're gonna go to Ed?
Okay, two things. Thank you for the letter on the spaces, and again, thank you for re-looking at it and eliminating your need for special permits for the parking spaces. Just so I get it in my mind, what's the pilo number that's gonna be on the decision?
What is it total? $360,000 total.
Okay. Don't like it, but that's where we're at. That's all I've got. No new things for me tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mike has one quick question.
Yeah, just a very quick one concerning the access. Obviously, you'll have to cut the access off to some of that space during construction.
Absolutely.
How long do you anticipate that to be?
I believe we thought a year at the most.
Okay, maximum a year, so if you put signage up, yeah, I think that may cover it.
So, at this point, this is a continued public hearing for the major modification for 11 Cushing Place to add 16 units to an already approved plan of 54. So, if you'd like to comment, I'd ask you to step to the microphone in the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and talk to us.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Ann McGuigan. I reside at Five Anne's Way. I'm a former member of the Chelmsford Planning Board, served chair for two years, a member of the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee. I have obviously resigned from both boards recently, but I do have some issues I would like to address tonight. First of all, I'm real sorry that you guys kept talking about a transportation company and didn't use its name. Its name is Gentle Arms. And I own it, and Edie Copenhagen owns it. We are the company that has the vans parked up and back personally, and some of my drivers would disagree with me. I don't have a problem with the traffic, and I'll tell you why. I've sat in my location, which is right on the brook, right on the corner where the culvert is, that little building, it's like a little Nantucket cottage, that's where my office is. The vans are parked two parking lots up. I see that traffic every day. There's not a lot of traffic. I'm sure there's gonna be more traffic should this building go up. However, I don't think it's gonna really negatively impact my business. If it does, what it would do is slow our vans down going out and/or coming in. That means our drivers are on the clock a little more. So who does that affect? The owners of the company, because we're gonna pay them while they're on the clock. So that's not a concern I have. I also want to point out to you, and I really want you to think about this, Adam Winstanley has shown what a quality guy he is in projects that he's done in this town, and when he says he's gonna do something, he does it. He doesn't just sit back and say, "I'm gonna do it," and then do something totally different. And he works with the boards, he works with the residents. He has shown his true colors. We've seen it in the Stop and Shop redevelopment. We're seeing it here. You're seeing it with the changes based on the Historic Commission's comments. And those are things that are really, really important to me, that you've got a company that is known. It's a known quantity to everyone, and they have a proven track record, and that's something that we should consider. The other thing that I think you really need to consider, and it's been bothering me, it keeps me up at night, not too many things keep me up at night, this does. If this project is not approved as it stands now, what's gonna prevent someone from coming in very quickly, throwing in a 40B where there's no controls at all, putting up whatever they want, and you as a board have no controls, the town basically has no controls, and someone will come along and say to you, "But there's X number in the pipeline." Well, that's where they sit in the pipeline. If someone gets to the front of that pipeline on Cushing Place, that's what you're gonna have, and that concerns me. You know, we now have an entity willing to build a walkway along the brook, open to the public, a park at park in there, open to the public, replacement of stones on the side of the brook which have begun to cave in. I mean, the brook is an integral part of the center of Chelmsford, and it's an integral portion of the Center Village Master Plan, and we've talked about it and talked about it, and here's a company willing to help us move forward with that plan. You're stuck with a 40B or a contractor's yard, which it's currently zoned for, you're not gonna have any help whatsoever there. One other issue, and this is another thing that really irked me, social media. A lot of the letters that were read in to the record were generated by comments made on Facebook that was started on the Chelmsford News website. That is a fact. And the bottom line here is, Mr. Cristiano, who's opposed to the project.
Please don't state any names.
Okay, the person who shall not be named, who's opposed to the project, started the stream. He then. the stream. He then took it down.
I'm gonna ask you to be reserved in your comments as far as...
I will.
Thank you.
Bottom line is, the letters are based on the information that was broadcast through social media, many of them, not all, many. And that should be taken into consideration. The other issue I have is inclusionary zoning. I think the bylaw is wrong. I think it's bad. That's my opinion. I'm not the only one that thinks that. You're getting a payment in lieu of in the amount of $360,000, payment in hand. You get a 40B up there, you get Zippo. I have great respect for Dave Hetterson and the Chelmsford Housing Authority. They have done wonders in this town. And not for one minute, please don't think I don't respect what they've done and what they will continue to do. But I'd rather see $360,000 that's available to him than to have a project go in there that pays nothing and does nothing for the Center Village Master Plan either. And, you know, you've got a major modification in front of you, but when you look at it realistically, your building's not higher, your footprint's not bigger, and you all know that. Although it's major, because there were additional apartments, the building size is remaining virtually the same. And you're getting what you want with your design by working with, you know, not just the planning board, the other boards involved have been working with Adam Winstanley, Winstanley Enterprises. Even the Conservation Commission has approved their plans. But I'd ask that you think seriously when you go to cast a vote, and look at what ramifications might occur. Should you vote this down, and look at the positives that would occur should you vote in favor. Thank you for your time.
Jim, the lady behind you was up first. I'm sorry.
Pat C. Sullivan, 33 High Street. So I'm concerned, like many others, about the traffic, and I think that many of us have been through Chelmsford Center during the rush hour. And people coming out of Cushing Place and going around the library trying to get to Nashua, that traffic's backed up past the library at times, so there's many light cycles. And then there's cars blocking the intersection, and that adds to the traffic. And then people coming from Nashua coming through the center in the other direction, same thing. They're blocking traffic from Littleton Road, so that sometimes I've been on North Road coming into the center, and not one car's made it through the light because the traffic from Littleton Road is blocking the traffic. So I am concerned about traffic. And the other thing is the parking for the bike path. I'm worried that friends and relatives of people living at Cushing Place are going to use the bike path parking, and also, in the year that the bike path parking is closed, I know you're saying go across the street to the church or to Sovereign Bank behind Sovereign Bank. So all those bikers and walkers are gonna be crossing those main roads. And that's a little bit of a concern when you have kids on their bikes crossing those roads. So that's a concern to me just with the parking there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lane?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is James Lane. I reside at 290 Old Westford Road here in the Wendell Land of Chelmsford. And I was also, I am the current chairman of the Center Village Master Plan, as well as I was the former chairman of the Master Plan Committee. And I've sat on this board for four years, and I was on the Board of Selectmen. I am so glad that this lady behind me got up and talked after Ann, because she's a tough act to follow, so a little buffer for me. But I wanted to really just spend a few minutes, and we have a letter in your file for both the first approval as well as the second. It was a unanimous decision by our board to approve this project for capturing the vision of the master plan, and I want to talk about that for a minute, because it's not all the time that you get a development team that comes in and really does their homework to understand what the vision is, in this case in Center Village. These folks came in and they did their homework. They read the housing study that was done. They knew the need, they knew the numbers as far as how many units. And while I'm on that, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see this, but early on in our master planning process for Center Village, we did a study by Fine Point Associates that was funded through the Department of Housing here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. On the opening executive summary, it says "Chelmsford Village offers a number of amenities that could be attractive to potential residents, including proximity to shopping, dining options, library, rail trail, and the new center for the performing arts." The survey results indicated that in 25%, one quarter of the respondents, they would be interested in living in Center Village and would like to access these types of services. If you go on and read in the study, and I won't go through it all, obviously, but I want to highlight a few things, because it's very important for this board to consider. When you get to, the last page is here in the conclusions, the Center Village area is well positioned to capture a significant portion of age 55-plus of folks that are empty nesters that reside here in Chelmsford that would like to move to Center Village. That's pretty remarkable, and that is all real data that was taken from surveys and public input. Finally, in the conclusion, it says that the market could support 166 to 250 units of additional housing in the Center Village from a period of 2010 to 2020. There's 70 here. So that's more than double what was done in this study by the Department of Housing. With that information, I'd like to just state that I wish I were in your seat right now. This development could be, and if you approve it, will be, the cornerstone to revitalizing downtown Chelmsford. Things to consider, 70 units, an addition of 16 units, right, the original 54 and then the 16 additional, that's 16 additional homes that are gonna be eating in our restaurants, that are gonna be going to our stores, and are gonna be feeding the other small businesses that reside in Center Village that need the revitalization of downtown. We need to have residents down there. I think one of your members stated tonight that residency feeds business. It's simple economic development. Eating in our restaurants brings meals tax, that's additional revenue for the town. Up to 60, 80 cars, that's additional exercise tax that feeds the town coffers. So there's a lot of positives to this development. I hope you'll do the right thing and approve it tonight. Thank you.
Any further comment from the public?
John Edward, Proctor Road. I serve on the Housing Advisory Board, and I specialize in tilting at windmills. Regarding the inclusionary housing bylaw, if nothing else, I'm hoping what I'm about to say may be instructive in terms of us all learning more about this particular bylaw and how it's implemented. Reading from the bylaw, it says the following, "The board may adjust the fee," this is the payment in lieu of, "based upon evidence from the applicant that the required fee would result in the project being uneconomic." And although this is not a court of law, although I think we have enough lawyers here that it could be, I don't think public-private benefits that in many cases could be referred to as investments in the property that will likely show up in their marketing brochures suffices as evidence of the project being uneconomic. So I'm hoping that that will be considered in future cases. With respect to this case, I just want to point out three things. They continue to say that we're stuck at $360,000. They have not responded to the suggestion that there be a peer review process to actually assess whether or not a higher payment in lieu of would be uneconomic. They have not responded to the suggestion that there be a phased payment in lieu of, because of all the revenue that's gonna be generated by this project over many years. And they haven't even responded to the fact that they've shortchanged the Housing Stabilization Fund by rounding down when they added the extra units. They said they would maintain the same ratio, and they actually didn't. So I just wanted to point those things out. Thank you.
Any further comment from the public?
Good evening, members of the board. Attorney John Lattaroot for Legal Abutter, Clean It Inc. I was here before this board.
What's the address of the abutter?
It's Clean It Inc.
The address?
Yes, the address. I don't have the entire file here, but he's been notified as Legal Abutter.
Is that the cleaning establishment there?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And we're here for the issue of the compact parking. Now, if I understand correctly, what I heard...
It's eliminated.
It's been eliminated.
That's right.
Okay. And there are some concerns with regard to the narrowing of the sidewalks, the closeness of the building for safety purposes. I don't believe that's been addressed, and this new plan has just been brought before this board tonight. That hasn't been considered. The other issue is, there's a bridge on Cushing Place, and the two-way traffic, I don't believe there's been any study as far as traffic passing simultaneously past this bridge. I don't know if the plans currently show what the dimensions are of the width of the road and whether they're in compliance with regard to the traffic flow. There's been mention of some traffic counts that were done, but it's my understanding that there was no device laid down in those counts. I'm not sure how they were done, they were hand-checked off. So we're not really sure if there was a valid traffic study. And I've got some photographs here for the board with regard to the issue of the traffic flow, also by Brick House, and I'll hand the photographs out in a minute. The Brick House Pizza area, there's a fire lane that is marked as no parking zone right now for fire purposes.
That's off-site.
Correct. But if you look at the traffic flow into that area, okay, you will see that it is very difficult for two-way traffic to be able to safely pass.
So...
I don't see any studies done on that.
So, hold on a second. The plan has a "do not exit" sign from the property going out in front of Brick House. So no cars from this site will be exiting through the Brick House. So...
The placement of that sign is at the entranceway. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. It's at where people would exit.
Okay, but there is significant amounts of parking up top in that area currently. Counted 37 cars just in parking. And for them to come down and hit that sign and have to turn around with restaurant traffic backing around, there'll be some issues with that with regard to safety. I don't see these signs on the plan.
Wrong there.
Pardon me?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The other issue with the Pilo, it's my understanding that the payment in lieu of was for people that didn't have experience with affordable housing development with the housing department. And in this case, this developer is very well-versed and has developed some multi-million dollar projects. So I have some issue with the amount of the $20,000 as well. So, and with regard to the bridge, the traffic flow and the bridge work, I haven't seen any conservation approvals brought before the board. Are there any?
That is not before our board. What's before our board is 16 units. The project's already been approved for 54. I believe Conservation's already been through this for both, I think both, applications.
And I understand Beaver Brook may fall under federal guidelines under the Rivers and Streams Act, so has that been considered?
I can't answer that question. Go ahead.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Any further comment from the public? Any further comment from the public? Any further comment? CNN, I have one question for Katie. On the revised parking plan and the sidewalk, the sidewalk's ADA?
Yes.
Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, just a comment on the attorney on two-way traffic on that bridge. In the last 24 hours, I had the opportunity to test it. A full-size car was coming the other way, and my expedition was going the opposite direction, and we were on the bridge at the same time, and it was perfectly fine.
Can I touch on the Pilo explaining the purpose, since there was a little confusion as to what it is?
I'll give you a little leeway on it.
I just want to explain the payment in lieu of. It's a device designed to share the quote-unquote "burden" of housing affordability. It enables the town to either require additional units to be set aside for people of lower income, we'll say, it's not low income, but lower income to actually live in the town where they work, attend school, whatever. Developers, we're asking them, no, we're actually requiring them to pay a certain amount into a fund if they're not going to build the housing units on-site. We do have figures related to that in our bylaw, and we're allowed to, by our bylaw, negotiate with the developer based upon evidence of the property not being, the project not being viable. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Any further comment from the board?
I'm here.
So it's a public hearing. If the board so wishes, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would so move.
A motion by Mr. Raizback, second by Mr. Root. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Or abstain in these questions? So unanimous. At this point, the will of the board, do we want to make a motion to go forward, or how do we want to handle this?
Well, I'm willing to make a motion to...
Okay.
See exactly how I would phrase it, to approve the major modification and associated special permits. Now, does that need to be one or multiple?
And then the written decision to follow?
Right, written decision to follow, exactly.
So we want to reference the new parking plan?
Yep.
The payment in lieu of?
The architectural details.
Architectural details, and...
Probably the parking, probably, excuse me, the traffic count?
The traffic study.
Traffic, well, that will be part of the submission of the paperwork. I think that's about it. So I have a motion by Mr. Raizback. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Arroway. We need a supermajority for this, so I'm gonna ask those in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So we got an opposed. We have two opposition, Mr. Cole and Monica Gregoire. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Need a break?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're going to take a three-minute break. The next item on the agenda, which is 44 Westwood Street, has been continued by the request of the town and the applicant. So, the next item up would be 152 Turnpike Road. So, whoever's here for that, please set your, your presentation up.
I think they had some, or you can speak for yourselves, obviously, but I think there were some issues as to the massing and the location of the units and maybe just the location of the corridor and the overall density. This unit shows an overall nine-unit development. And again, we're using our eight units per the site as our base number. But what we would propose here is to do two units and do the payment in lieu of option, in which we'd do the payment in lieu of in full conformance with your bylaw, $125,000 per unit. And then we would be requesting one bonus unit for a total of nine. So what you have here are nine market rate units and then two, we would be paying for the two payment in lieu of units. So really what you have before you are two fully conforming projects under your B A O D and in conformance with your C E I O D. The question really for the board is that if you want these affordable units constructed, the density will be more like the 10-unit project. If we're looking for a little bit more variety here, and I think we can do, you know, certainly this allows for a better open space and I think a layout and design, going to the nine-unit option allows the board to still be in conformance with their bylaw and have a full payment in lieu of. So these are the two options before the board this evening that we're presenting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Start with Monica.
Oh, can I just, I forgot, on the new plan, we're showing two parking spaces, two garage spaces inside, and you can see that in the rear units, we have space outside for two parking spaces as well. We think we may be able to find some space in these front units with some adjustments to do two in and two out as well, but right now, we're just showing two inside of the garage spaces. So all of these units have a two-car garage, which really, I think, from the first design is what lessens a lot of the pavement look, is that we have no outside parking, no marked outside parking spaces.
Monica.
All right. So I appreciate the open space on the second one and that there's fewer units. Um, I don't really, my, I think the one issue I brought up on the other one, I don't know how you would do this with it. I believe a facade should face your main street. I think you have residences across and their facade's face the street. It's nice to have that whole neighborhood feeling where you kind of look at each other and, I don't know. But I appreciate the open space on the second one, so, um, what are you doing in terms of, are there any, what's, are there any play structures on this or?
No, this is conforming to the 25-foot setback around the entire property line since we're abutting residential properties. So ideally, people would have their own private space or open area behind each of these units. And then we have just the shared open space in between the triplex and that duplex unit.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, kind of your standard townhouse type, type structure.
Right, and I will, I will add as well, in the front here, this pink shaded area is actually a pocket park, and you can see we've actually added on a sidewalk going up to the Turnpike Road so that there's some connectivity. And I also have a letter from the L R T A stating that they're going to now start reviewing Turnpike Road for accessibility for buses. So we're hoping that this can actually be a functional roadway and the buses will actually come down this road.
Yeah. That's, that's it for questions. I, yeah. Next.
Let me ask, no, let me ask you a question. Are you for the nine or the 10?
I'll take the, the nine unit.
Glenn.
I'm good question-wise. I think this looks a lot better than what was there before. I'm in favor of this project here.
Okay. Any questions, Rihannae? Ed?
Well, it's the 10 units, so I got it clear. You say it quick, I guess I didn't catch it. Were those guys one garage space or two garage spaces?
These are all one garage spaces, and that's why we have all of the extra parking in the rear with the T-turnaround for fire equipment in the back.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. I like the newer design, the nine spaces tonight. I think the two indoor parking spaces is an advantage to selling this thing. It, I think it makes for a better project.
Yes.
And I like the, everybody's got a little more, a little more outside space and a little more privacy and, so, maybe you can put a window on the ends or something.
Yeah, on the outside side elevations, there actually are some windows, and we were thinking that along the roadway, we would have some landscaping in order to block the view from Turnpike Road to the side of the side elevation.
So I'm for the nine units, what's being presented, and I think, to me, that's a nicer layout, if I can put it that way. That's it, Judge.
Okay. Mike?
I'd approve either one, but if I wanted to live in one of them, I'd like to live in the nine unit.
Done? Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Henry?
I will echo the opinion of other people here. I'd like the nine unit better. I think it's a nicer-looking project. I think you'd be a little bit bigger units because you're going to get a two-car garage in each one of them, too. Yeah, I, I would go with the nine.
Nancy?
I'm, I'm going to echo Mike on this one. Is, I'd approve either one, but if I had to live in them, I'd prefer the nine.
Any questions?
No.
So I'll be the lone one that would like the 10. And I will, I will explain why.
Okay.
I'll explain why. 10 units, you get two affordables already built.
That's true.
Okay? So the goal of 10%, we're exceeding that, we pick up one extra unit. Whereas the payment in lieu, I got it. The inclusionary housing is still fluid, and we're going to be discussing that at some point, I think, this summer. And I'm not 100% clear on how the monies will be allocated or used and that type of thing. So that's why I say 10 for two. So I don't think I changed anybody's mind, but that was my reasoning.
Okay.
So, did I change anybody's mind?
No.
No. So much for being shit.
No, no, and I, I felt just the opposite about it.
Okay.
So, you know, because these are ownership units, if they, if they include the affordable housing, we only get two, whereas if it's a payment in lieu and it goes into building apartments, we get credit for more.
Okay. I can argue the point. This is, this is not a public hearing, but I will allow a quick comment if anybody from the public would like to comment on this project. Seeing none.
George, can you just ask from here or do I get it a little up there?
You're supposed to go.
I want to know if they have a locus map, because I live on Turnpike Road and I'm trying to figure what this is.
I'll see if I can pull one up.
So what, so Bob Joyce has asked about location of this.
This is, this is in proximity to, just before the entrance to Stonegate, as you're coming down. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
For your elders.
Mister, for you, Bob, anything. Mister Latina?
Brian Latina, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Rep., and I live at 15 Jesse Road, which is almost opposite this, this single-family house on top of a rock wall. This is not a 40B. I believe we changed the, the whole district there to an overlay district for multifamily housing. However, the Stonegate property next door was, was under a 40B, I believe. And my, my question is around the retention pond that has failed at Stonegate and is not being enforced. Actually, the water runs out onto, onto the street at Turnpike, just at the upper part of this property. And I'm wondering if that, plus the retention pond at 130 Turnpike, which has, which also failed, if, if the drainage coming past this property is a consideration for the 10 units, nine units, or seven?
Part of the, this is, this is just determining whether the app ability to apply, and the applicant will have to apply with all the standard information and drainage. Typically, with a project like this, they have to maintain all the drainage on their site, and we have a town engineer that will review the drainage situation. And, am I correct, Christina's saying that they're going to have to maintain and take care of the drainage on-site?
Absolutely.
They cannot discharge into the street or anything like that.
So it has to work like Stonegate and the 130 Turnpike, which both failed?
So we, we now have a stormwater management department that will be forming, and I would put, you should be the first call to them regarding those two.
I, I have, I've spoken to almost everyone. The town just put it, put the water down the drain, I'm going, I'm going to be thrilled in the federal law there. The property with the smaller footprint, looks like all the parking is on the ground level. That would make all the living space, unless I'm guessing wrong, on the second level. So this, this arguably packed-in housing, or whatever we want to call it, is not handicap or elderly-friendly. I guess it doesn't have to be ADA compliant, but is all the living space on the second floor, like 130 Turnpike?
So, so I'm going to ask you to direct your questions here.
Okay. Okay, I'm asking you, is it, is there any living space for handicapped or elderly?
At this stage, they don't have to give us that extensive detail.
Okay.
But it appears that the parking's going to be under, and then your first floor is going to be your living space, second floor will be your bedroom space.
But they wouldn't have to, because it's multifamily and they can pretty much build anything, they don't have to abide by any ADA interest or requirement?
I don't, I don't know. That would be something they would have to deal with the building department on, and I'm sure there's state codes and federal codes on ADA requirements if they have to meet them or not. That's something that's-
Multifamily, I would doubt it.
That's, that's beyond this board's purview, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else? Seeing none with the will of the board?
I would be prepared to bring a motion that we find applicability.
So are you, is that a motion or?
That is a motion.
I have a motion by Mike, seconded by Glenn. Those, any discussion? No discussion?
Do we have to decide what type of project?
Nine. Plan two.
Option two.
Plan two.
Two from every space.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous?
We're going to drop decision put up there?
Sure.
Yeah, cool.
Okay.
Yep. Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is 104 Turnpike Road. Kinlock Investments seeks C I O D applicability, finding under 21, community enhancement investment overlay for multifamily development for the property located 104 Turnpike Road, per Article 24, Route 129 Business Amenities Overlay District.
You again.
You again.
Just state your name, your affiliation with the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Melissa Robbins, I'm here from the law firm of DeShane &amp; Farrell. We're here tonight representing 104 Turnpike Road. I think Katie is setting up her own computer, so I'll just hold on a second to make sure technology is caught up.
I would like you to just start your presentation because we're-
Oh, sure. Yes, so I think that, I don't know if the board has it on their, their iPads there, but there have been some significant changes to the development, I think, since the last time the board saw this, a couple weeks ago. As a result of the board comments and the feedback from the board, I think most notably, the board will notice right up front, and we actually already have it up, good job, Katie, is that the unit facing Turnpike Road has now been, there we go, is now a two-floor building facing Turnpike. So we've lost an entire floor. The way we've done that is we've reduced, we've made it longer, and now there are 10 units per floor instead of eight. We've also removed an entire building from the center of the development, as you can see. And the way we've made up the extra units is to make the last four, the two buildings in the back, I guess I can use this pointer. Perhaps. There we go.
That was you.
I want boards back, Colleen. Yeah.
The red one.
There we go. So the buildings in the back here are now four floors, so Kate is going to be my vanna. And you can see what that has allowed us to do is make all of the amenities central to the project. So we have the pool, the clubhouse, and all recreation area in the center. So it has made for a better layout and design. I'll let Katie speak quickly as to the other technical changes to the development.
Right, so, good evening, everyone. Katie Anne Wright with Howard Stein Hudson. So a couple of the things, as Melissa stated, there was some concern as to the height of the building closest to Turnpike Road. So we did reduce that building in height. So that this building here is two-story. The building next to it, which you only see the end from Turnpike Road, is still three stories. The building that used to sit here has disappeared, and these two buildings have grown by a floor. What that does is substantially open up some of the green space. We also eliminated, I kind of had a central corridor here that didn't have parking off of it, we decided to ditch that idea altogether, which again, opened up even more room for pedestrian amenities and for the site amenities to be a little bit more centralized. The exterior walk is still around the entire project. We still have the pocket park in the front here. And because this is now based on the actual field survey, you can see the wetlands area at the back are actually separated, which allows us to look at the possibility of bringing this trail, a forested trail, through there to an access easement that exists out to Alpha Road, which is where the transportation is. So we're going to be looking at that a little bit further, too, but that's certainly another amenity we'd like to look at as the plan progresses further. And I believe that covers it. The parking is the same ratio. The buildings at the back, although they did get taller, the only place you're going to see five stories is at this back end where the garage entries are. So essentially, it's a garage under. So if you think about it, like any house with a garage under, the front door, it's going to basically look like a four-story building on all three sides. You go around, you go, you're going to dip down to the back and you're going to go under the building in the rear. So the only people that are going to see, or have it appear to be five stories, is if you look through the woods from the DPW garage. It's the only view shed of that, of that elevation. And you see that there's significant open space to the rear here. Everywhere else, it's going to look like a four-story building. On these two buildings, and they're the set furthest back, they're hundreds of feet away from Turnpike Road in that location. So if you have any further questions, I, I hope we modified it in the positive based on your feedback.
Mike? Questions?
No, and this is, I understand what we're doing here is this is still the vote of applicability stage.
That's correct.
So it's certainly done above and beyond what we might ordinarily expect for that, and I think it looks pretty good.
Henry?
How many parking spots do we have? How many units?
There's 284 parking spaces, so that's at a ratio of 1.7 per unit. So it's a reduction based on your bylaw, but the idea being that, based on I T data, transportation data for apartments of this nature, we're looking at an area where there's transportation, where there's walkability. It's supposed to be a live-work-play environment, where you're supposed to live here and work within the 129 overlay, that we won't need all of that parking. But if it's deemed necessary, I mean, we could certainly show, there's certainly sufficient land area to show it being land-banked.
I would definitely like to see some parking land-banked. I just have a hard time seeing, a lot of people are going to have two cars, it's just the way it happens. Even if people are walking, they still buy the car and have the car.
So the ratio here is about, it's about half-two bedrooms, half-one bedrooms, and there's a couple of, there's a couple, I believe, three bedrooms in the project. But there's parking underneath both these buildings. The 1.7 comes from a number that, that Princeton has used over time, and a lot of other multifamily developments use successfully as to not over-pave.
Yeah, but I mean-
But certainly, there's substantial area that we could add more if necessary.
Yeah, I, I think that might be an option. Other than that, I'm fine.
Nancy?
Yeah. Katie, did you look at parking under that center building in the string?
No, because the topography doesn't really dip down until you get to, until you start getting to the rear of the parcel substantially. So it wouldn't make sense because it would have to be out, you'd have to falsely kind of bring the ground up around it. Here, it makes sense.
Or dig the ground down, one or the other.
Right.
Yeah, all right. I, I think it's a huge improvement in terms of open space and livability, and we're here to, to approve applicability, so I think you've gone over and above.
Ed?
I agree. I think it's a huge improvement. Thank you for going down to two stories in the front. This is, just a question, this is still affordable housing project, right?
Well, it's proposed under your bylaw, but under the inclusionary bylaw, it will have the percentage. We're required to have 25% of the base number at 50%.
Okay, so-
Yes, there's affordable units within the project.
And we'll be able to count all of them in our inventory.
Absolutely.
In our inventory.
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm all set for tonight.
Glenn?
Yep, I think it's a great-looking project. I got no problems. I think it meets everything that we need to do. I'm good.
Monica?
Yeah, I like the additions. Thank you for listening with these suggestions, especially the two stories in the front and the easement from the trail connecting to additional transit on Alpha. I think it is definitely applicable in terms of the intent, let it be, you know, it's the live-work-play, but, oh, right there, so, yeah, looks good to me.
So that leaves me. Previous board member many years ago used to say, this is a blank slate. This property has nothing on it now. It's a blank slate. I would like to see you making an effort to get a lot closer to the parking requirements because you're talking about a 20, about 21, 22, 23% reduction of our bylaw, which to me is a lot. I still think there's a lot of units on here. You know, when this comes back to us, I'm going to look at that. I'm going to look at the parking, I'm going to look at the buildings, I'm going to look at it in totality, but I think there's still room for improvement here. And that would be a reduction in the numbers and maybe a little more open space, because you say live, work, and play. There is a play area here. You've got a pool which encompasses a good portion of it. You know, you could have a little more open space in here. I'm not counting the wetlands in the back. So, with that being said, this is not a public hearing, but I will allow a few comments from the public if anybody wishes to comment. Please remember, this is not a full-blown site plan. This is just at a stage where the applicant is presenting a plan to move forward into the application process.
Bob Joyce, 103 Turnpike Road, directly across from this. And because they're not showing the, the rest of the locus, I'm trying to figure out where that, where that road goes out, because originally, the road went out directly to, right opposite my driveway, which-
Goes off between the two properties, yacht property and the property to the right of you, as you're facing your house.
Okay, so it's still, you know, still rather close. It's a 24-foot road, I understand. And there's 168 units. I cannot imagine 168, only 168, it could be more, because people could have two cars, 168 more trips coming out opposite my house. I have a hard enough time getting out my driveway as it is. And I want to clarify something about the zoning. I, I believe last week, or two weeks ago, three weeks, whenever you had the first one, I thought Evan said you couldn't do certain things, like, can you approve this concept and then come back later and, and deny it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
It was something, I can't remember, that was brought up. Do you remember, Evan?
What?
That you said?
The board will conduct their, their full public hearing based upon the technical review.
Right.
And if they determine that there is a technical deficiency-
Right.
-as you're hearing tonight, you're hearing what the board is going to be looking for in addition to their-
But what I'm talking about is once you approve this tonight-
This does not lock in, it does not guarantee approval.
All, all this does is, is allows them to take the next step, to go for a full site plan and special permit, and instead of applying for multiple special permits, they will apply for one special permit that will encompass everything. And I believe it also puts a timeframe on it as well for this board to act.
Well, it creates a partnership, that's the point, it's a point of the bylaw. That's why this informal kind of preliminary concept plan is part of the process. If the board doesn't like the project, now's the time, if it's dead on arrival, now's the time to say so.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted them to say.
Yeah.
And that is that there is no, there is no transparency in this. I didn't like the, the law to begin with anyway, I'll be honest, but to approve it tonight, and then if I fill up three rooms with neighbors that are opposed to it and are going to talk about traffic up the kazoo, then what rights do they have if you guys have already made the preliminary?
It's got to be, it's got to be data-driven in the public hearing, so the board can't, not approving this project, it's not ready for building permits, there's no zoning permit being granted as part of the applicability.
Okay.
It gives the applicant, the proponent, a, a, a level of awareness and understanding as to where the board is.
Okay.
And then they have to prove it to the board. All the technical issues, parking, lighting, drainage, traffic, all need to be proven to the board, just like a full-blown site plan, special permit.
So, so at this stage, this property is owned IA, and based on the 129 zoning overlay district, it allows residential application within the 29 overlay. Otherwise, if that didn't exist, they could file for 40B and we would have no control.
Yeah, I hate getting that, getting that-
I know it's a canned answer, Bob, but you, you and I have heard of, I've been here 13 years, and unfortunately, it's an, it's an answer.
I just sat through, sat through the debate on the apartments that are going in the center. Everybody was complaining about four stories, and there's no neighbors to it, really. And we have neighbors, and we have people that live in capes and ranches, and there's several people in the audience, I know, tonight that came down to see this. My one question, at least one question, is, it looks like they've turned the house in front of me, or they've left it turned and made it two stories.
Two stories, that's correct.
Now, why wouldn't they go to the one above it and do the same thing? And then put, and then put those extra units in one of the back units? Because there are people that live there, too, you know? I'm not just here for me, I'm here for the whole, the whole neighborhood.
Sure.
So why can't we ask them to go back and make that? And that's on high ground. I was over there today. If anything, digging a hole deeper in the back could be a problem, but I, I don't think that's what Katie said. She said, as you move forward, it's harder to do it, so.
Yeah.
I'm opposed to this, quite honestly, at this point. I'd be looking, if I was sitting there, I'd be looking for all kinds of, I love the word amenities. They wore it out at town meeting. But I think the road will need to be, need to be widened. I think there should be sidewalks on both sides of Turnpike Road. And I'm even thinking that maybe there might be a case for having a, a, a single light at the end, so people can get out. Because when Stonegate moved in, it was a, it was awful. They didn't put, even put a stop sign in. And then finally, over the years, people got into so many accidents, they had to put a stop sign in. So I am opposed to it, my neighborhood's opposed to it, and I hope you look at all the amenities. It needs to be lit better on the streets, on the street end, too.
Yeah, those will, those will be taken up in the site plan, as you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Anyone else? And I want to just remind you that this is a very preliminary plan.
Tom Gazda, Chelmsford Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Just a question for reference, and it's partly what, what was being talked about for, for a locus. What's the distance from the exit to Warren Avenue?
They have it right here, Tom. It's from here, Warren Avenue is, like, right here.
Yeah.
Do you want to see it?
He's got it, he's got it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I, okay, just, just trying to get an idea of what that distance is. That's all I'm going to ask at this point. We, the committee did look at the very preliminary plan that was discussed, and will probably have some input with regard to that.
So, so Tom's here, and last time I was chair, Tom was chair of BPAC, and we actually had a very good working relationship where projects were presented to BPAC for, for comment as well to this board, and I really like to see that taken up. BPAC has done a good job as far as pointing out, you know, site distances, as far as sidewalks go and that type of thing. So hopefully, this board gets back to that practice. I think it's a good, good thing, and Tom- So hopefully this board gets back to that practice. I think it's a good, good thing, and, and Tom does a great job, so.
Thank you, George, and thank you to the board. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
I see one more person and then I'm gonna call it unless there's absolutely.
I'll be quick. Tracy Cole, ninety-seven Turnpike Road. Basically, I think I'm right at the corner of the, well, according to the picture, it would be the top building in the corner. I live right across the street. I'm not entirely opposed to developing this land. I know you're gonna do it, but in your words, whoever wrote, I'm gonna assume it was you guys that wrote the bylaw, the overlay, this is to provide housing opportunities that will be compatible and complementary. I don't find that complementary to our little single-family house neighborhood. That, that's like, not complementary. And it's basically the size. It's, that's a large complex to put into a single-family home neighborhood. Everything that is in that area, there's nothing over two stories high, and everything is either a cape or ranch. That's gonna, you're gonna drive down Turnpike Road and that's gonna slap you in the face. Though, the, I don't know if that's changed or not, but the last time I looked at the plan, it was only a fifty-foot buffer to the road. And that's like, you put a couple ornamental trees in the front of that, that's not gonna hide anything, that's not gonna camouflage anything. That's gonna hit you in the face when you come down the road. To preserve and enhance the aesthetic qualities and characteristics of the one twenty-nine, the open space, connectivity, and overall business parks, this is not aesthetically pleasing or aesthetically in line with the area. And I can't see how having something like that in my neighborhood is gonna preserve my property values. I see that bringing down my property values. And it's not that high to begin with. That's gonna make it worse. Not to disturb the residents in the neighborhood or detract from the appearance of the town and adjacent residential neighborhoods. That's a big distraction. That's a big detraction. I'm not opposed, I would much prefer seeing something like Stonegate, where there's a bigger buffer, there's more trees. You drive down Turnpike Road, you, except for in the wintertime, you hardly even know it's there. It doesn't come out and slap you in the face. And the, I don't know what the, I forget what the next one down is, something Orchard Terrace? Is the next complex down, I believe? I forget. But that's not that visible. I would much prefer seeing a development like that, in that scheme of things, to be done in here. Make a road, put in a little neighborhood. I'm good with that.
Okay.
I also had concerns on the parking. I read that there was spaces required. It said three hundred and fifty-nine, spaces provided, were two hundred and eighty-four. Where are all those other cars? That's a difference of seventy-five. Where are all those? Are they gonna be allowed to park on the street?
No.
Okay.
So, so it's getting late.
Okay, I just had one more question.
Sure.
Is this gonna be on a bus route? Are you now gonna have a city bus going down Turnpike Road? Is that a?
To the previous project, LRTA is supposedly looking at putting a bus down Turnpike Road. Whether that happens or not, I don't know. But that was from the previous project. There was a letter stating that, from Jim Scanlon, who's the LRTA director, that they were gonna look at it. So, I will, I will follow up on that, so.
Cause I'd really rather not have a city bus going through my neighborhood, stopping across the street from my house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm guessing Brian Latina's standing up for a reason. And it's probably not because his back hurts to sit in these cushiony chairs. I, I will ask you, because it is getting late.
It's quick.
And I'm, we don't have to do the.
Brian, you've never been quick.
I'll make it simple. Brian Latina, fifteen Jesse Road. That property is a Pine Grove, the Pine Grove on, on Turnpike there. I know the town actually cut a bunch of cedars down just below that, probably to enhance the, the view for the developers driving down Turnpike.
Exactly, Brian.
And this.
Absurd, absurd comments, completely absurd.
Levin, Evan. Okay.
The town is conspiracy with the developer.
Hold on a second. Evan. Evan. Evan.
All right.
Again, Brian.
This, this property, this property was, was targeted as a forty B. We recognize that. None of my neighbors know that, except for the one across the street that I happened to mention four or five years ago. This will detract from the properties around there. It is nothing like the properties in this area. I recognize that we did the overlay district and this was the buffer. But it's interesting to me that the very first projects that come in are residential in nature. If you put the number of children that'll be available in that property, in that property, you're talking millions of dollars towards our school budget. I know that, I know that's not a consideration. I know that, that, that's a bit of an issue. But we'll have the neighbors come out and my, my vote too is no, this one's way over the top, bigger than Kensington.
So, so I will just make one observation and then you go back and do, do some research. There was a study done several years ago by the town to look at projects throughout the town on their tax ramification versus, you know, positive or negative. So, that study is available. I would encourage you to look at it. You may disagree with the findings, but it's there. It was done by a consultant, so it, it's something to look at, okay?
Well aware of that. One thirty Turnpike Road, at the ADA, when they put that one in, that forty B, they estimated one child. There were eight standing in the bus.
So, so, we're trying to, Bob. Bob, please. It's been civil all night. I don't want it to get out of, out of hand, okay? And like I said, I, I, we don't have to open it to the public because it's administrative view, and I'm being courteous, okay? And I don't appreciate, you know, innuendos and that type of thing, either against this board or, or anybody in town. Okay, you may disagree with their, with them, but please, okay? I'm trying to keep this on a civil note.
I didn't attack anybody, I just said.
Oh, Bob, please, okay? So, at this point, the, the will of the board define, we have a decision in front of us.
We got a draft decision.
So, there's a draft decision before you. I, I made some comments on it. I will retract one of my comments because I reread the bylaw and that would be comment G three. Okay? I withdraw that, that comment because the bylaw clearly states that the affordable is on the, not the bonus, bonus numbers, on the, on the, the original numbers, not the bonus numbers. There wasn't some math errors and number seven didn't make sense to me, but it looks like Evan's corrected that one. And I will withdraw our comment number four, G four. It's really the fifth, this story is only visible from above grade and the garage entrance, so. I don't see, I don't know if anybody else made any comments back to the office.
No, I didn't have time. I, the comment I'd have is, you've got your G four comment. I don't think we're increasing the back buildings to four, to five floors. They're four floors. They happen to have.
So we can just eliminate that whole verbiage in there if you want?
Yeah, the garage floor is underground.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that, that backside of the building's five floors. But based on our bylaw, it's really.
It's the way it appears, so, yeah. Yeah, I'd, I'd strike the last, everything from increasing to the end of that paragraph to where it says table one.
Increasing the two rare, rare buildings from four floors to five floors requires a special permit on the section.
Delete that sentence.
Just delete it.
Yep.
That's what I do.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would be happy to move that we find applicability under Bayard and Seoid.
I have a motion by raiseback, second by Cole. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. I, if you want, I'll explain it. So I believe it's a blank slate and a can, and, and I, as I stated before, I think it's a project that's large and compatibility with the neighborhood across the street. And I think you can solve those problems. Parking, you can solve. I think you can solve part of taking care of the neighbors across the street by maybe making the front building smaller and putting more up back. Maybe relaying out the buildings in back or something like that, but that's my reasoning behind it. Next thing on the agenda is, I want to talk about meeting schedule. We, Evan had talked to, sent me an email regarding Middle Six Three Coalition permitting best practices. They want to come before our board make a presentation. And there was a little confusion. They thought our next meeting was May thirty-first. It's actually May twenty-fourth it's scheduled. Seeing that there's no new public hearing scheduled for that day, I'm, I'm asking this board to cancel May twenty-fourth's meeting and have it May thirty-first. And we will take up anything that's continued, which will be forty-four, Westwood Street.
Did we, does, do we actually continue that?
We're going to, we're going to. So, is that amenable to this board to go to the thirty-first and skip to twenty-fourth?
Oh, yeah. Let me see. We have anything, you gotta be ready.
We have nothing heavy. So what I would do is I would just ask the Middle Six Coalition to come in at like seven fifteen or seven thirty.
Memorial Day week.
Yeah, and I got.
But it's Wednesday, so.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
And I have a Tuesday meeting, and I have a Wednesday meeting, and I have a following Tuesday meeting.
Yeah, I got a few of them.
So.
Yeah, he's not happy.
I'm, I'm for the thirty-first.
What did Monica say?
Thirty-first is fine.
Glenn?
Good.
Ed?
I'm okay.
Mike?
I'm good.
So that's what we'll do. Cancel twenty-fourth, May thirty-first. So let's go back to forty-four, Westwood Street. I need a, a motion to continue a public hearing to May thirty-first at seven o'clock.
I will move that we continue that hearing until May thirty-first at seven o'clock.
I have a motion by raiseback, second by Cole as a favor.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. So, I put down a summer schedule. I think we'll just talk about that
With the thirty-first.
In June.
Okay.
Actually, yeah, we'll discuss that in June, or maybe at the next meeting. And then I put down work session topics. It's late. There's some things I just want to consider about having a work session probably in June, depending on this, on the workload.
Yeah.
Talk about inclusionary. I think we need to talk about it. Nana has some information on historic, and there was one other one. Evan, what was the other one?
Medical, marijuana, probably.
Okay, we should do that.
Not medical, recreational.
Recreation, okay. So I'll get together with Evan on topics. If you have any topics, send it to Evan and we'll, we'll discuss that. I want to update UMass West Campus. We're going to hold a public hearing June sixth. It's a Tuesday at Chelmsford Senior Center. It's gonna be run by NemCog and it's gonna, we're gonna do a SWOT analysis, strength, weakness, opportunities, and threats. And based on my, our last meeting, which we filled the room over there, we'll probably have a pretty good turnout, but we're trying to get that word out. Any committee reports?
I attended the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was supposed to say I, I attended the EDC meeting. Lots of general discussion, but nothing specific to us at this point. I mean, they were very interested in the eleven Cushing Place and that's, that's been resolved. They were very interested in, in additional development under the Bayard, but that is obviously happening because we approved two of them tonight, so.
Okay. Monica?
The Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee will be holding a presentation and public input session on the, actually next week, on the eighteenth, at the senior center. We're talking about what's going on in the area and get some input on what we want to see, what people in the area want to see going forward. So that will be from seven till nine P M.
Sorry, there's a new, new business in Vinyl Square. And they seem to be pretty busy, so I hope that works out for them. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we don't need an executive session.
Then I.
Are we all set? We're all set. I'll take a motion.
I would move to adjourn.
Wow, that was quick. Usually you.
Yeah, well, I'm hungry.
I have a motion by raiseback, second by Cole to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
Good meeting. Good meeting.